Chair, it's one thirty-one. We can go whenever you're ready. Just let me know. Good afternoon, everybody. Our meeting will be live in three, two, one.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Louis Vier, Chair of the Hart Board of Directors. Please silence all electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. Welcome to the October seventh, two thousand twenty-five Hart Board of Directors Public Hearing to Resolve an Impasse Between Hillsborough Transit Authority and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local Seventy-nine Pursuant to Section four-four-seven-point-four-zero-three Florida Statutes, which is now called to order. The meeting format is hybrid with board members physically present at the Hart Administrative Office, twelve oh-one, Eseventh Avenue, Florida Conference Room, and participating via Communication Media Technology. Please stand if you're able to do so and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Chair Vier.
Here.
Director Woolstall.
Here.
Director Williams. Director Cameron Cepeda.
Present.
Director Clendenon.
Here.
Director Hartfield.
Present.
Director Hobbs.
Here.
Director King.
Present.
Director Knight. Director Mackelpatrick.
Here.
Director Mechanic.
Here.
Director Miller.
Here.
Director Myers.
Here.
Director Nieberg.
Here.
Director Schisler.
Here.
You do have a call, sir.
Thank you, madam. I hereby open this hearing as advertised on a public notice, including in the packet. Now, Board Counsel is recognized to explain the impasse procedures and the standard for our decision. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jan McLean, Board Counsel, Gray Robinson. I just want to call the Board's attention to the packet that you had received with the agenda, the notice, the documents from representatives of both sides, management and the union. And you also received the excerpt of the statute under which we are operating for this afternoon. The way that we will proceed is that the parties have been through multiple negotiations. They've come to this point where they waived the special magistrate arbitration and brought their remaining issues of the contract to the Board, sitting as the legislative body under the statute. Both parties will have twenty minutes to present their positions, and they can retain an amount for rebuttal if they would like. They can indicate that at the beginning. This is not a quasi judicial hearing. This is a hearing before a legislative body under Section four forty-seven of the Florida statutes. We will take public comment on the issues that are in front of the Board as the legislative body only, the two issues only. There are two issues that, like as I said, and you'll probably hear me repeat myself, that are remaining to be resolved, which need to be resolved today. After the presentations, the Board will have deliberation and will take their action individually on each of the issues. Then, once that is determined, it will be memorialized in an agreement that which will be proffered back to the parties for their consideration to ratify or not. So essentially, that is the encapsulation of what we will be doing here today. And I would ask that the Board listen to each presentation, hold its questions until the end of their presentation. It'll make it clean for the record, and you'll be able to understand what is being said to you. You might have your question answered in the subsequent presentation. So I think at this point in time, let me just double check my notes. Okay, yes, that's all that I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. We appreciate you. So next, we're going forward with public comment. There appear to be two people signed up at this hearing, called for the explicit purpose to resolve two remaining issues at the impasse between Hart and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local Seventy-nine. Any public comment shall only address the specific issues that identified on the agenda. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. When addressing the Board, comments shall not be directed personally against a Board member or staff member, but directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board member, staff, and the public. The Board has set aside a thirty-minute period for public comment, as stated in our Hart Board Policy two-ten-four-A. Speakers signed up to speak either in person or virtually either the day prior to the meeting or the day of the meeting. The Chair will call on speakers by name in order in which their requests to speak have been received. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Please refrain from any discussions on any matter brought up during public comment until after all public comments have been completed. We will begin with the first. Miguel Volcancel, unless if I read that wrong. Miguel, how you doing, Miguel?
I'm testing. Good afternoon. My name is Miguel Barker-Self. I'm a transit supervisor, and I've been working for Hart for twelve years. And here's some of the reasons why the union and ourselves deserve our proposed raises. As a supervisor, we have a greater responsibility, and we are held to a higher standard. We are here twenty-four-seven, seven days a week. We run this agency when management is not here. We work during emergency, inclement weather, during hurricanes, pandemic, and any other emergency situation. We are here. When everyone else is working from home, we are here. We put the public safety ahead of our own and our family. During an emergency, we come to work, leaving our family behind and alone, because we made a commitment to be here to the agency and to the public. We are there, taking all the risks, driving to flooded roads, creating detours, rerouting buses, taking passengers out of harm's way to shelters and to safety. Our decisions affect the budget, the public, and the safety of the operation. We receive higher pay because we have greater responsibility. Poor decisions can cost the company money. Managing a large, diverse workforce requires a unique skill sets. The technical knowledge and the communication skill needed to lead others take many years to develop. We motivate employees and maintain morale. Our experience and expertise deserve a higher salary that reflects the years of work and knowledge it took to reach to that level. We expected to mentor, guide others using the expertise, our expertise. Our higher salary isn't a privilege. It's a payment for the added responsibility. We investigate accidents, incident. We protect the public and our employees. We are the face of heart to the public. Passengers, employees, and management expect us to perform without any mistakes. We put ourselves at risk every day by dealing with unruly passengers, vagrants, and trespasses. We are responsible for our work and also for the performance, safety, and efficiency of the entire company. We are in charge of the OTP, the routes, public safety, and much more. Something goes wrong, we often bear the blame and have to fix the issue. Also, we have to answer to it, to senior management and even to the public. Supervisor bridge the gap between staff and upper management. Supervisor work long hours, and we have to make hard decisions under pressure. We are here for a career, not just for a job. We are here for the long term. We want to retire here. We love our job and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. We appreciate you, sir. Next is William McFarland.
Good afternoon. My name is William McFarland. I've been at Hart for thirteen years, eleven of those as a transit controller. As transit controllers, we have one of the most critical roles in any transportation and all transportation systems. We ensure every vehicle, every operator, every passenger moves safely and efficiently throughout the system. Our operations center runs twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, and it's an immense responsibility placed on the controllers to ensure that the system runs smoothly. A transit controller has higher level of responsibility and expectation placed on them from management, operators, and the public. We oversee the coordination of buses, vans, and streetcars through the entire system. A single wrong decision can lead to massive delays, accidents, or even endanger lives. Our decisions affect hundreds, even thousands of people daily. Transit controllers must constantly make fast, high-stakes decisions under pressure. When emergencies happen, breakdowns, accidents, threats to employees or patrons, this to controller that has to think clearly and reroute services and communicate with multiple teams in real time. This level of mental strain and responsibility justifies a higher salary. A transit controller requires extensive training, knowledge, and experience. Transit controllers must understand scheduling systems, communication protocols, safety regulations, and technical operations. They also must manage people, drivers, and maintenance teams all while keeping public service running smoothly. Finally, the higher pay is not just a reward, it's an incentive for leadership and reliability. The organization needs people who can handle enormous responsibility without cracking under pressure. Paying controllers and supervisors more ensures that the most capable and experienced individuals remain in these positions. In short, transit controllers and supervisors deserve higher pay because they are the nerve center of the entire transit system. Their decisions keep the city moving, and their salary should reflect the weight of that decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, it would appear we have no further public comment. Therefore, we will go to a presentation of case in chief by proponents for Hart Management. We will begin with Mr. David Adams from the law firm of Bennett Jacobs and Adams for the Hart Management Teams, or Team. Mr. Adams, you're recognized, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Appreciate the public comment from Miguel and William. Transit supervisors work hard, and the controllers work hard, and we appreciate their hard work. I put together a brief presentation, so you can take a look at that. When I'm finished with it, I'll hand out a copy for you guys, so you can have it. And let me just try to walk through the process here, if we can. So, as Council has told you, this presentation's related to Florida Statute four forty-seven-point-four-zero-three, which is designed to resolve the impasse between Hart Management and Teamsters Local Seventy-nine. I'm going to try and outline the negotiation history, the unresolved issues, and present Hart Management's recommendation for resolution of the impasse. The reason we have this process is because in the private sectors, you know, unions are allowed to strike. And so there's an economic, you know, impact, and each party has the ability to do what's best. But in the public sector, they're not allowed to strike. And so instead, you, this Board, acting as a legislative body, is, you know, tasked with doing what's in the best public, best public interest, including the interest of the transit employees. So just some background as to why we're here and kind of why that process works. So the negotiation history is the collective bargaining agreement between the Teamsters and Hart has a three-year term, and the current collective bargaining agreement expired on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. So initial bargaining sessions for the, for the three-year period, October one, two thousand twenty-four, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, began on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, which is three months before the contract expired, which is fairly normal and usually sufficient to conclude the negotiations. Multiple sessions were held, I believe it were thirteen, and there were tentative agreements on virtually all of the areas but these last two issues that have been presented to you today. And despite the good faith efforts of both sides, an impasse was declared when the union's second ratification vote failed on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So let's talk a little bit about the process here. Florida Statute four forty-seven-point-four-zero-three governs the resolution of an impasse for public sector bargaining. And the legislative body, which is you, must conduct a public hearing and take final action. So after the Board's decision, the matters presented back to management and to the union for ratification. If the decision's ratified, that you, that you decide today is ratified by both sides, then it becomes part of the collective bargaining agreement. If the decision's not ratified by both sides, then the decision becomes binding for the current fiscal year, or the first year of negotiations, but, and the parties would continue to bargain for the remaining time periods under the contract. So the following issues are unresolved. Section six-point-four of the Collecting Bargaining Agreement, emergency pay, and secondly, cost of living wage increases. So, Section two, six-point-four, as applied right now, is untenable, as management's position, and frankly, fiscally irresponsible. Here's what it says. Declared emergencies. Employees required to work during hurricanes, tropical storms, or other state-declared emergencies, those three words are important, in Hillsborough County shall receive time and one-half for all hours worked during the periods provided that such emergency is no longer than ninety consecutive days per event. So what is this? What's the impact of this? So the result of this is that if there's any executive order from Tallahassee, it automatically triggers ninety days of time and a half emergency pay. And many of these executive orders have zero impact on Hart and its operations. So the current provision is a poor use of public funds because it automatically generates ninety days of time and a half, even when the public emergency doesn't affect the operations of Hart. Now, don't get me wrong, it's not easy working during an emergency, and the transit supervisors deserve time and a half. And they work hard, and they're away from their families, just like these gentlemen have said, but they don't deserve that, that time and that extra pay when they're not in those positions, as management's position. So let's take a look at three of these. The first one, Executive Order twenty-five-point-six-seven in the upper here, is the Gulf Winter Weather System. This was in two thousand twenty-two. You may recall that it snowed up in North Florida, and I-ten was closed, and it did have an impact on Florida. There's no question. It was a good executive order. What impact did it have on Hart? Absolutely none. What happened? The Teamsters got ninety days of time and a half pay because of a winter wonderland up in North Florida. Secondly, the second one, the impasse of the war, excuse me, impacts of the war in Israel. Again, this may have had impacts on the state of Florida and what it does, but it had zero impact on Hart and the Teamsters and their operations. What happened? They got ninety days of time and a half pay for an event that had no impact on Hart. Third, Executive Order twenty-four-one-forty-nine, impacts of the crisis in Haiti. Again, another example of something that may have impacted Florida and was probably a public issue that deserved all of our attention, but it had zero impact on the Teamsters and had zero impact on the operations of Hart. Yet it resulted in all of the Teamsters getting time and a half for a ninety-day period. So management's proposed terms to, to deal with this issue, we believe, you know, helps, is a fair compensation for the people who work hard, and ensures continuity of services, which is really your, your job as a Board of Directors when you're not a legislative body. So Hart's new proposed language for declared emerg, for emergencies is as follows. Emergencies. Employees required to work during hurricanes, tropical storms, or other emergencies in Hillsborough County that directly affect Hart's operations shall receive time and one-half for all hours worked during such periods. The emergency period will commence when operational service levels are adversely affected and will end after Hart resumes normal operation service levels, which are pre-event levels. So this is the, this is the language that management would ask this Board, acting as a legislative body, to adopt to deal with the emergency pay. Here's the union's proposal. I'll read that also. Employers are required to work during hurricanes, tropical storms, or other state-declared emergencies in Hillsborough County that affect Hart's operations shall receive time and one-half for all hours worked during such periods, commencing upon the date slash time of the declared emergency and ending fourteen days after Hart resumes normal operations, open per end pre-event levels, or when the declared emergency ends, as determined by the Hart CEO, in collaboration with the Hillsborough County Emergency Operations. the heart CEO in collaboration with the Hillsborough County Emergency Operations Center, whichever occurs first. So there's three problems from management's perspective with this. The first one is the one in the blue and the green at the top. They've stricken the word "directly affects" heart's operations. It has to have a direct impact, because if it's just an incidental impact, I'll be back here explaining to you what's going to happen at the next arbitration, where we're arguing about whether it was a direct impact or a non-direct impact. The second problem is the blue in the middle, commencing upon the date time of the declared emergency and ending 14 days after heart resumes normal operations. Again, this is a remnant of what the current provision is. There's no reason why the Teamsters should be paid for a 14-day period if there's a declaration or emergency made. I understand they get their time and a half during the, during the, the emergency, but there's no reason to set a floor and to add 14 days on top of that. And then lastly, the yellow portion, which is as determined by the heart CEO in collaboration with the Emergency Operations Center. The issue there is that there's no question that the heart CEO needs to cooperate with the EOC. That happens during every emergency. So does the fire department, so does the police department, so does the City of Tampa Police. But at the same time, the Emergency Operations Center doesn't tell the sheriff how to run its operation, doesn't tell the police how to run their operation, and it doesn't tell the fire department what to do. And they shouldn't tell heart what to do. So my point is, is that the heart CEO needs to make decisions that affect heart and to operate heart, and it doesn't need to be in cooperation with the EOC. I have no doubt that they will cooperate with the EOC, because they're the, kind of the bandleader, for lack of a better term. But he shouldn't have his hands tied by a difference of opinion with the EOC. So the financial impacts, this is the part that's, that's frankly, the biggest stumbling point and frankly, the most outrageous part of it. So on the left-hand side, this is a chart that demonstrates the overtime pay for the Teamsters on the left-hand side, in the middle for the operators' union, ATU, and on the far right-hand side, it shows the difference between the two. So you'll see, in 2023, the Teamsters were paid $685,000 of overtime pay. If you follow that across to ATU during the same time period, the ATU was paid roughly $78,000. So the difference between overtime for ATU and for the Teamsters was $606,000. 2024, you know, was a hurricane year, and the numbers are substantially larger. The Teamsters received $1.5 million of overtime pay. The Teamsters, excuse me, ATU received $6,200 of overtime pay. The reason why I say it's outrageous is, give or take, there's about 50 Teamsters. So that $1.5 million was spread over 50 people. ATU has 500 to 600 members. So the people, the 600 members got $6,200, and the 50 people got 1.5 million. And that's why this is untenable and cannot continue. And then, carrying it forward in 2025, the overtime pay, and this is important that I want you to consider, was $783,000 in 2025. Again, the Teamsters, which, which are 500% larger than the, than the ATU, received 10% of that same amount, roughly $75,000. So over the three-year contract, the overtime that was paid to the Teamsters is $2.8 million. And again, I don't begrudge them for the time when they're actually during emergencies and when that's going on, but the 90 days over and over and over again, every time the governor declares a state of emergency, just doesn't work for this organization. So let me switch gears to the cost of living increases. During negotiation, heart made a proposal for three cost of living increases. 4.85% for the 2024, 2425 fiscal year, and this was rejected by the union, and then 4% in 2025, 2026, and 4% in 2027. The Teamsters' proposal is 6%, 6%, 6% for all three years. Now, year one is over, because you may recall, the negotiations began on October 1, 2024. So the 4.85% isn't really relevant anymore, because the year's run. But it is important to understand that the Teamsters are looking for 6%, 6%, 6%. So I decided to take a look at what inflation was supposed to look like over the next three years, and the people, of course, who do that with, who are smarter than me, are the Federal Reserve. So this is a chart of the projected inflation for the Federal Reserve, that the Federal Reserve released on September 30th. And so if you look at the second half of the chart to the right, you'll see the 2025 inflation expectations are about 3%. If you had your magnifying glass, I think it's probably 3.1, somewhere in that ballpark for this year. But as you can see, as time goes on, the inflation expectations go down. So in 2026, they're about 2.5%, and then in 2027, and continuing into 2028, the Federal Reserve expects inflation expectations to go back to the 2%, which is its goal. So that gives you just, you know, some, some data points to think about when you're working on the cost of living increases. Next are some comparisons. One of the things you, you should consider is comparisons with other unions who, who do similar tasks. So the negotiations for ATU were consistent with what was originally offered to the Teamsters, which was 4.85% in year one, 4% and 4%. Pinellas Sun Coast Transit Authority received 3%, 3%, 3% in their last contract. The Florida Department of Revenue gave their employees 2.9%. I think we're starting to see a trend here, 3% to 4%. And then lastly, the City of Tampa Police and Transit Unions were 4%, 4% and 3%, which is consistent with the Federal Reserve's inflation projections, which are going down as time continues. So kind of wrapping things up here, the requested action that management will ask is that the legislative body adopt its position on these two unresolved issues. Specifically, heart management requests that the board adopt heart's proposed language for section 6.4 emergencies and heart's proposed cost of living increases of 4% beginning in fiscal year '25 and '26. Those are the only two remaining years on the contract. Thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of management. As the board attorney has stated, now it's your responsibility to make a decision that is in the public's best interest, including the interest of the transit employees. And management's proposals, we believe, are in the public interest, given the accrual of over one, an entire year of overtime, which is, again, $784,000, which occurred during the labor negotiations, which have been ongoing now for 15 months. Heart's obligation has a responsibility to manage public funds, and the current fiscal challenges that face heart are, are a challenge at best. So thank you for your consideration. I'm here to answer any questions that anybody has.
Mr. Chair, would I have a question? Yes, sir, Mr. Mechanic. And, and by the way, before, Mr. Mechanic, Ms. McLean, in terms of the procedure, is it okay to proceed with questions for each council?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Jan McLean.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
That's the way I had anticipated that the board could ask questions.
Good.
Per council.
I think that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Mechanic, go ahead, sir.
Excuse me, if I could just...
Oh, yes, ma'am. Wait, wait, Mr. Mechanic, just one second. Jane, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanted to indicate that I was keeping it in time, because we have 20-minute time presentation for each council, so there was 14 minutes. Are you retaining?
Yeah, I would like to reserve the remaining six minutes for rebuttal. Thank you.
And just to confirm his, Mr. Adams' responses to our questions, or not out of his time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, ma'am, Mr. Mechanic. Go ahead, and any other board member who wishes to ask questions, just raise your hand or let me know otherwise. Go ahead.
David, I have a question. You did a good job explaining everything. But I, I didn't quite follow what, what events you are suggesting occur that triggers the overtime and stops the overtime. I, I realize there has to be an emergency and it has to affect heart, is your position. But I didn't, I wasn't clear on what the event was that started the clock tick and stopped it.
Okay, so under the current provision, it has to be a state-declared emergency. So in other words, the governor is in control of the...
Yes.
Of, of the decision, instead of the heart CEO. The ATU contract allows the heart CEO to determine the declaration. But it starts, the time and a half starts upon the declaration of the emergency, and it continues for ni, at least 90 days, or until the emergency concludes. Does that answer your question?
No, I'm asking you, what are you proposing as the two events, the start and stop the time and a half?
Okay, excuse me, I didn't, I didn't understand. So under the proposal that management has presented, the emergency period commences when, when, when the CEO determines that we need to take, you know, action to deal with the emergency. Like, for example, we have to get all the buses up to the northern part of the county to make sure they don't flood during an emergency, and we have to suspend service, and we have to, you know, do a lot of things to get ready in case there's a hurricane event. So it would start at whenever the CEO declares the emergency and that action needs to be taken that changes our normal service levels. And then it would conclude when heart resumes its normal service levels. So for example, if we had 38 fixed routes, for example, and the hurricane's coming, you know, and Wednesday at noon, we're going to cut down to 12 service levels for emergencies and to move people in and out of shelters, that would be the beginning of the time and a half for the transit supervisors. And then, when the hurricane's over and the shelters are empty, and we go back to our 35 fixed routes or 38 fixed routes, that would be the conclusion, and that's when the time and a half would stop. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, yeah, that answers that question, but then now, what, I, I realize the governor has the authority to declare an emergency. What other authority? Isn't it the county administrator, a separate authority that declares an emergency in Hillsborough County?
Yeah, I think, I think a, a number of government entities can declare an emergency, and, and of course, some are local and some are statewide. So, but what the new proposal does is it gives the CEO the discretion to decide if the emergency that's declared, whether it be countywide or statewide, is one that adversely affects heart's operations, and if so, then that's when the time and a half kicks in, until the CEO decides that we're going back to our normal, normal operations. Does that help?
Okay, I got, I got it. I got what you wanted to do. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Board member Myers, and anybody else? Okay, question, sir.
Thank you, counsel, for your, your overview, but I want us to be clear, only one person calls an emergency here in Hillsborough County, and that's County Administrator Wise. She's the only one, once the governor sends the orders down, it is Bonnie Wise. The sheriff, Mayor Castor, all of them meet. I don't know if you, you're there at EOC? Okay, so Bonnie is over everything once an emergency hit. I do have concerns of a 90 days when it's nothing in our area and the county administrator has not called anything. So I would not be supporting that in a new contract, because it needs to only be to Hillsborough County when the county administrator, Bonnie Wise, make that call. She doesn't make a call, there's nothing should happen here in Hillsborough County. We rely on our county administrator to make that call for us. And that's after meeting with the superintendent airs with the school, because she meets with them first, so we can shut down the schools first, to make shelters and all of that, and then roll with the buses and all. That's how that has happened for a number of years. When I say a number of years, when I joined the county in 1988 as an employee, that was in effect then. That has not changed in 2025. So that's who the order comes from.
And that's a good point, you know, counsel will advise you on this, but you can accept management's proposal, or the union's proposal, or you could fashion your own proposal, and that's one of the options you have.
But, but I think we need to be clear on who calls that once the governor issue his orders, okay? And I think that would clear up some misconception here when the union agreement, because paying employees 90 days when nothing is going on, I'd probably love to get that paycheck too. I'm just joking. But 90 days when nothing is going on, and you still receive it overtime and a half?
Right.
Come on, I mean, we just need to understand the difference of who's calling it and what is affecting Hillsborough County. Haiti is not affecting Hillsborough County, you know, and the other two that you put up there is just, okay, so I wanted to share that. And then also looking at the, the cost of living. The standard cost of living, even for our county employees, is 4%. I mean, when you look at 6% and higher and all, even when you look at what the City of Tampa is paying their, their union workers, it's 4%. I mean, everyone is compatible. And so I think that's something else we need to look at, too, as a board.
And I think it's my understanding that the non-bargaining unit employees receive 4% also.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
And lastly, I do want to appreciate, I do appreciate the two staff from the union coming in here and speaking, sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a board member, Wosel, Clendenon, Niebrich, then we'll go to Williams, King, anybody, and I'll go last, I do have questions, but go ahead, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Adams. I was sitting here and hearing you articulately go through all of your findings, had me reminiscing about our Adely LaGrande days when you were doing the same thing, painting a, a very clear picture for us to understand. During COVID, the county kept us on an emergency order for like, almost two years, it was like 20 months, I think. Would this have triggered them to get time and a half during that entire period since...
Well, under the old language, it was a state-declared.
Mm-hmm. And, and the state kept one going for a long time as well, because they're required to, for like, federal requirements for certain things to trigger, so they do it for those reasons. So would that have met that requirement?
I'm not positive about that, but what our language says is, is, you know, other state-declared emergencies. And so that seems to be the trigger.
So they got paid when we went into an emergency, and I, you know, it's for the chair to decide, I don't want us to get over our skis here, but item eight is deliberation. But I guess that's for when we decide on what our conclusion's going to be, but, so they got paid for when he declared a state of emergency over Haiti and Israel. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
That is profoundly offensive revelation. I can't believe that that, I mean, it's, I, right when I thought we were getting through the bad stuff, I guess, well, this was negotiated, I guess, right before I got here, but that is disturbing to find out, and I cannot believe that, 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 I can't believe we even made it here today. In fact, there's always a risk of things where I might not have paid so much attention to this, but we could go below that 4.85 and 4% today if we wanted to, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And that's a real danger of pushing things like this that are way, way beyond where we should have even been, much less us having to come to this point. So I hear, I see the proponents coming next, but that is just a very disturbing revelation to come to light today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we have next Clendenon, Niebrich, then I have Williams, Board, and, King, Board Member Hartfield, did you have your hand up, sir?
I did.
Okay, great. So y'all pick whoever goes next, because I think y'all were a tie. Go ahead, sir.
I think we, I think we've beaten the dead horse about the, of the issue with the disasters, but the issue on, on salaries. For the initial proposal with the increase, and the first year has come and gone, what is, how were those employees compensated during the last year? Was their pay frozen time? Did they get, did they get a COLA?
It, it was, and let me be clear about management's position on this. They didn't. So the answer is that no, there was no increase, no COLA increase in year one of the contract, but they did receive $784,000 in overtime pay. So it, it's kind of a, you know, a package deal that its management's believed, because they received the $784,000 and negotiated for 15 months, that essentially that is the COLA and then some.
So management's proposal is to have a three-year deal, starting on the day this contract is signed, or just the two remaining years on the...
Just on the two remaining years. They would receive a 4% increase today, if that's what you choose to do, if you accept management's provision, and they would receive a 4% increase next year, but they would not receive anything for year one, because they received the $784,000 of overtime.
So this is not, this is not a three-year reset? This, you'll continue, you'll renegotiate in two years instead of three?
Correct, and, and it's my understanding that negotiations are going to start right after this meeting to try and finish the three-year contract.
So they've started, so in essence, they've already experienced the, I mean, notwithstanding because it's apples and oranges, whether the overtime versus COLA, they've already suffered the one loss, because they've missed a year on, on the, on the COLA increases. Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Board member Niebrich, go ahead, sir.
Just actually, I want to follow up to that. I understand that when the old term expired, there was no COLA increase for fiscal year 2025, and it's management's position that because of the legacy emergency pay, that that equates and/or exceeds what would have been approved had the contract been ratified.
That's absolutely correct.
I had a question from the previous director, and that is that this will be... I had a question from the previous director, and that is that this will be a three-year term that started one year ago, and it is management's position to not pay retroactively, but to inflate the pay as if it occurred, and for this fiscal year, it would be last year's pay raise times this year's pay raise to establish the new baseline. Is that a correct understanding?
So let me make sure I understand what you're saying. So let's say, just to make the math easy for all of us, you get a dollar an hour, and so there's going to be no increase in year one, which now has expired because the first year of the contract was October one, twenty twenty-four, and now it's give or take October one, twenty twenty-five. So if the board were to adopt management's position, then the union would receive a dollar and four cents starting now, but they would not receive the four point eight five percent that was originally slated for year one because, because the negotiations dragged out for fifteen months and they received the benefit of the, of the emergency pay, which it's management's position, that would have gone away had we been able to negotiate that at an earlier time.
Let me be a little bit more clear, we're not talking about, their, management does not want to pay retroactive pay.
That's correct.
But it does wish to, it does agree to inflate the pay as it was proposed on a go-forward basis.
Correct, for years two and three of the contract.
And the management's position is that the retroactive pay to include the ratification bonus that was offered has been consumed by the emergency pay that has been distributed because of the legacy emergency provision. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And then can you also confirm that the seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars that's been paid to the Teamsters, is that the full accounting for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, or was that taken at some point throughout the year? In other words, is it more than that?
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to your question. I suspect it's not because I doubt we closed our books for September thirtieth within the last six days. So I, I think it's probably in excess of seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, but hopefully not materially.
Okay, and then the final question, you, you talked about when the normal operation might be reduced in time of emergency from the number of fixed routes to a reduced fixed route. I'm a full-time employee, and those adjustments cause me to not have to work as many shifts. Does the collective bargaining agreement provide for some form of cancellation pay? Or in those circumstances, does the pay impact the individual?
I would have to confer with Mr. McCarthy on that issue, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Sean McCarthy, Chief of Operations. So as it relates specifically to the Teamsters, all of the Teamsters work during this period. So when an emergency is declared, it has no impact on whether or not they work, as opposed to the ATU where we have a provision where essentially you, I don't want to use the word volunteer, but you sign up to work during these periods of emergency because we don't want to call in an excess amount of, of resources when essentially we're not going to need them to run a reduced service. But as it relates to the Teamsters, the controllers, the transit supervisors, and the maintenance personnel, those are considered essential during these periods and they are expected to work.
So to say, to say what I heard, to summarize what I heard you say, is the number of shifts available even during times of emergency do not vary in these times as they do for the ATU?
That is correct.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Board member Williams, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you for your feedback, Miguel and William. The question on the seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, is that, if I were to divide that by fifty, so that'd be sixteen thousand dollars in addition to the normal salary?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, too. You can kind of calculate it on a monthly basis, so if that was, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand is probably eleven months, I'm speculating a little bit, but that gives you a feel for what it is on a monthly basis.
Okay. And in regards to the ninety days, I, I think we, I got my answer there, and then Commissioner Myers brought up the person that's responsible for the Hillsborough County, hence the guideline that's utilized, but from my understanding, you are involved, right, Mr. Dreamville?
Yes, I am involved, but just keep in mind that the county administrator can, could prolong or extend the declaration of emergency, which wouldn't have any impact on Hart.
Okay.
So it would be in the same situation as with the governor, when he does the state, state of declaration.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to understand. So if there is the, a ninety-day, just say ninety days that this, this, I guess, the call-out or, you know, a state emergency takes place, are you involved in, in weighing in and determining if your bus drivers or your, any aspect of the business is going to be impacted, whether it's north, southeast, because not every aspect of the bus system is impacted. So how do we address that, or are you a part of that? I thought that you, maybe since you were there, that you may have some impact or talk about it amongst the group that's making those decisions?
Could I, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I hate to interrupt, but I'd like to keep the questions pointed direct to the presenter, and then during deliberations, if there is additional information that we need to gather, we could ask during those deliberations, but I'd like to keep the presentations. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fair, that's fair, thank you. I was looking for understanding, so it's very clear. Okay, and the only other question I had was the, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Board member King or Hartfield, whichever one of y'all want to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, for your, for your presentation. I have just a couple of quick questions for you. You outlined three different scenarios under which emergency declarations were declared that did not directly affect Hillsborough County. Are you able to talk on any sort of basis about what did happen under, let's say, Hurricane Milton or IDA, which did directly affect Hillsborough County and Hart operations?
No, I'm not, I don't have the details of that, either the CEO or perhaps, you know, Mr. McCarthy might be able to speak to that, but I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not, I have to speak on that.
That might be, that might be a useful comparison. The other thing is, is do we know how much compensation is currently being paid to the other labor groups, mechanics, drivers, and the administrative staff, and what their most recent pay increase was?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the non-collective bargaining unit, or what you might call the administrative staff, received a four percent raise.
Okay, and what's the dollar?
And then they, I'm sorry, ATU had a four point eight five in year one, so I think their contract might be a year behind ours, so I believe theirs is four percent.
And the mechanics?
I think they're part of ATU. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Hartfield, go ahead, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, not to just belabor this issue, I want to speak directly to the COLA. You noted PSTA had a three percent COLA increase for the next three years. We are, in Hillsborough County, we're the third largest county in the state, so Dave Broward, Hillsborough, and then Palm Beach. Do we know what Dave Broward or Palm Beach County offered in terms of COLA increases, just to get a good place to benchmark?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I can try and get that information during the break here and, and get it back to you, but I don't know it off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir, anyone else? Including anyone virtually? Okay, a couple of questions, if I may, Mr. Adams. I just made some notes, I scribbled out some ones or the other, and I guess just, just observations, if you want to address it later or the other side wants to, you know, the, the directly affect language, I'll give thoughts on that in the end. The fourteen days after an emergency is declared, you can call it buffer time, whatever it is, is, does management oppose, if we call that buffer time, whether it's one day, fourteen days, or whatever, does management oppose any buffer time after an emergency?
Yeah, it's my understanding that we believe the workers should be paid during the emergency, but not outside of the emergency.
Okay, okay, yeah, good to know, just for purposes. And again, these are just thoughts on the language that I have. If you could go back, I, I took a picture of the graph over here during it, if you could go back to the financial impacts graph, if you're able to do so? I took a picture of it, I wasn't doing a selfie, I took a picture of it, so, right, just to be clear. Yes, sir, and it's the financial impacts with the differences in pay there. Question for you, maybe I'm reading this wrong, I want to make sure, because there, there is a difference, but correct me if I'm wrong, if you read this percentage-wise, take a look at the Teamsters in year two thousand twenty-three, you got about two million, regular pay one point three five, overtime pay about six eighty-five, again, correct me if I'm wrong, six eighty-five is about fifty percent of the one point three and change, it's about twenty-five or thirty percent of the gross pay, right? You go to ATU, you got two thirty, one fifty, seventy-eight, seventy-eight is about thirty percent of the two thirty, or fifty percent of the one fifty, I'm going through it, but in other words, percentage here is, is consistent. The monetary amounts may be very different, but that's because of the level difference in pay. Percentage-wise, and, and I, if you disagree with this, let me know, but percentage-wise, it's actually the same. Go to two thousand twenty-four, four point five million in gross pay for Teamsters, three million in regular pay, about eight hundred thousand dollars in regular pay, that's fifty percent, or strike that, overtime pay, that is fifty percent of the regular pay, about twenty, no, about thirty percent, thirty percent of the gross pay. Go to ATU, two twenty, one forty-five, seventy-four, seventy-four is similarly fifty percent of the regular pay and about a third of the gross pay. So I would suggest, unless if I'm totally off and I look like a moron, that percentage-wise, right, they're about the same. Just making that observation, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that roughly correct?
No, I think that's correct. The struggle we have with it is that the one point five million in two thousand twenty-four was spread over fifty people.
Sure.
Whereas the sixty-two, three hundred dollars in two thousand twenty-four of overtime was spread over six hundred people.
I get it. But I wanted to point out that at least percentage-wise, proportionally, it is similar, it's just that one group is paid a lot more than the others for, for, for other reasons. In terms of the, the six, 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 six percent, six percent, six percent that they're looking for, do we know what the Teamsters got in twenty-three and twenty-four percentage-wise as an increase in pay? Do we know that, does anybody?
I don't know that off the top of my head, do you guys?
That's fine. I, I just wanted to, to note, because again, the six percent city of Tampa was cited, we did do eighteen point five percent over three years for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, which would come out to about six percent, again, just to put that out there. I, I have other observations and, and thoughts, but I, I want to hear people's discussions or folks' arguments before, because again, just further consideration and all that, but just some questions and all that stuff. Any other questions from anyone?
Just in fairness, going back to the Federal Reserve graph, to the left-hand side of the chart, you could see, and, and we all remember this, that the grocery store and otherwise, that inflation was wildly more expensive right after COVID in twenty twenty than it was in the current time, and you can see that in the graph and the chart.
Absolutely, and that's why I asked what was in twenty-three and twenty-four, I don't know if there was any correction of it, just, again, and maybe something that the other side can answer. Any, and anybody on, virtually, any questions? Okay, by all means, yes, sir.
Sorry, to the, we're talking about increases off of a base, and I assume that the Teamsters work group on average earns a greater pay than does the ATU work group, and that is to compensate them for the additional skills and or experience and or leadership. So these are percentage increases on a higher base. Can you confirm that understanding?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. And a quick question for you, Mr. Adams, so does, and you can't speak for the other side, but is everybody in agreement that if there is a crisis now in Cuba or in Zaire or wherever it may be, that that's not going to result in time and a half? Everybody agrees with that, correct, both sides?
Well, not at the current time, that's why we're here.
But, and, and, okay, and, okay, and I'll, I'll ask the other side for that, because that's something that I would think get off the table, but, okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. Anything further, sir?
If you don't mind, I'd like to pass out copies of the presentation, so you guys have those. And then what I also did is I created a, because the language is complicated, I created kind of a, a canned motion in the event that, just to get the discussion going, I'm not advocating that my motion is the only one you should consider, obviously, but I've got kind of a, a motion in the event anybody wants to make it to kind of get the ball rolling at the conclusion of the presentation.
Could I have that, please?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I look forward to hearing from the other side and answering any other questions.
We appreciate you as always, Mr. Adams. Okay, next we go to a presentation of case in chief by proponents for International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local Seventy-nine. Next presentation is from Mr. Thomas Pilakac, I'm sorry, correct me if I mispronounce it, for Local Seventy-nine, for the Teamsters, sir, you are recognized.
Excuse me, I just wanted to clarify before we get started, that Mr. Adams used fourteen minutes of his twenty minutes, so he has six minutes left for rebuttal, if he would like so, to do so. And also, I would like to also just advise the board to, not to draw conclusions until you have actually heard both presentations, and then you'll have your deliberation, and you can talk back and forth, we can ask additional questions, but if we would please just keep open minds till both presentations are made.
Open minds and open hearts, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, both here and virtually. My name is Tom Pilasek, but I respond to hey you in a pinch. The, I have the pleasure of making a presentation about a subject I was not there for, that is thirteen bargaining sessions. I didn't participate. I don't know what actually went on. What I do know, to bring you to the present, is that ultimately, there were two packages that had management's last best and final offers that were given to the union members to ratify or not. The first one was in December, and that package was rejected because of wages in the emergency pay language that some people didn't like. Let me get back to that. The next time was in February, when management made its last best and final offer, and that I have included in the package that is part of your agenda package that we sent in for your perusal to acquaint you with how things went. And that starts at page fourteen of the agenda packet. With regard to the emergency pay, and I'm going to get it out of the way quick, the union agreed with management, both in December and in February, that the current language turned out to be unworkable because it did apply to things that really had no impact on Hillsborough County. We got it. There was hard bargaining over what changes should be made. And guess what? A tentative agreement was reached at, on December tenth, and that's at page nineteen in your agenda package. That is what the union proposed, and that remains.
Just a point of information, Mr. Chair, excuse me, speaker, I don't think anybody knows where this packet is.
I was going to say.
It doesn't seem attached to this item.
Thank you, sir. If.
So this, Mr. Chair, this is Jim and Clean Board Counsel, just for the record, the packet of information was included with the agenda that was distributed last week for the board's review. Believe you may have hard copies in front of you, so we could take a minute if we could, Mr. Paul.
Article six is what you're referring to for the T A.
That's correct.
And obviously, it stopped the time.
But it was, it was distributed.
Ah, okay, marvelous. Board member Wosel, thank you for saying what we were all thinking, and, and now we know, thank you.
Is everybody, is everybody ready for Mr. Pilasek to continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If I may, the difference that exists now is that, as the board members pointed out during questioning of Mr. Adams' excellent presentation, was that we can't agree who gets to declare the emergency, and that's up to you. We're happy with either the county administrator or the EOC. These people work regardless of whether the emergency is declared or not. They're essential, you heard that. The question is, when does the pay kick in? And somebody has to make that determination. We did not want to leave that to management's own discretion for We did not want to leave that to management's own discretion for a very simple reason. That is, there could be a situation where, as a matter of reality, there's still stuff going on in Hillsborough County that needs to be attended to, which tend to impact the operations, yet management says, oh, no, everything's back to normal, when it's not. And so if somebody makes the call that is outside of management, union's happy with it. And I think it's an excellent suggestion that had been made. So that's out of the way. The union's last proposal, which was agreed to, reflects that. It brings in the EOC. And if you want to add the county manager to that or substitute the county manager, that's fine with the union. And one other thing, one of the board members, and I forget your name, sir, I'm sorry, pointed out that he believed that the current language was atrocious or insulting. That language had been there a while and hurt never until this current contract asked for a renegotiation. So we point these out for one simple reason. The union is not trying to be unreasonable. Now, I'd look at my role, not so much as an advocate, but someone who helps assist you folks solve a problem. And listening to David, I'm not sure that, that management's recommendation would solve it. Let me explain why. What is the problem? The problem is getting a three-year contract. Problem number two, year one is already gone. So that creates problem number three. What you do today is gone tomorrow. We go right back to the bargaining table, and then we're back here again. And I don't think that serves anybody well. And in the meantime, the bargaining unit employees did not get a wage increase for last year. So what we have done is to look at the bargaining history, and we broke out the issues, if you take a look at our presentation, which starts at page 11. Page 11 is summary of the bargaining history. Page 12 breaks out what we see to be components of the overall wage issue, including the disaster relief language. That's a wage item. And the union has agreed to renegotiate that, I think quite reasonably. But keep that in mind, that that takes away what the county, or what management claims is a substantial economic cost. And that money can be used for pay raises. Now, let's go back to December again. The package that was given to the people to vote on was the same 4.8%, 4% and 4% that has been discussed today, but it was to be retroactive to October 1, plus a $2,000 ratification That package was rejected because the employees were looking for higher wages primarily, and they were somewhat upset at that time about, even with the union's cajoling, agreeing to modify the disaster relief language. And so they went back to bargaining, and what happened? What happened is that management stuck with the same wage offer that had been rejected previously, non-retroactive. It took away retroactivity, but it left the signing bonus, the ratification bonus. And if you take a look at page 14, 15, and 16 of your agenda package, you will see the entire package that management proposed. And it included a further modification of the disaster relief language to give even more discretion to management than the TA'd language back in December did. So common sense tells you, if you want a three-year contract, you're not going to take away things that had previously been acceptable. And I urge you to consider that when you act here today. The, getting to the wage components, we suggest and would respectfully request that the best interests of the employees, which you are statutorily charged with considering, is to grant retroactivity. And we have suggested in our presentation, 4.85% retroactive to October 1 of 2024, plus 4% retroactive to October 1 of this year, a few days ago, and 4% going forward for the next year. That way, the employees can vote on an entire three-year package without having to come back here again, without having to modify the negotiations to structure it only for two years, and potentially try to make up what they've lost. Why 6%? As Mr. Chairman pointed out, the wage increases which had been given previously, and I don't know the exact percentage, but they certainly approximated 6%. And we believe that supervisory employees who act as management's right hand, they are essential, as you heard, should receive a greater increase than increases offered to other groups of employees. These people are dedicated, and they're there, as you heard Miguel say in his presentation at the beginning. Many of them are there for the career, as opposed to others who just consider it a job. And their talent and their productivity and their dedication has been recognized because they've been promoted to these positions of trust. And one other reason, even though we know that projected inflation is approximately 3.3% or thereabouts, that's overall. That considers things that don't inflate and things that do inflate. Have you gone to a grocery store recently? You know, it seems that any more, you have to finance a prime rib or dip into savings to buy a can of coffee. There are certain things that people buy, that consumers buy, that these employees buy, that affluent people don't have to and don't. That doesn't even include the big-ticket items like auto prices, which are about to skyrocket. Consider that as well, if you would. And it doesn't have to be a straight 666. You can do a permutation. You can do less. You can do something in between, something like 4.85 or 5, 5 and 1/2, and 6. But this has to be forward-looking, and the economic realities that we're looking at aren't pretty for anybody. Again, please consider that. There's one final wage issue that came up at the last minute that has to do with premium pay, a 5% increase for master mechanics. ATU mechanics, when they get certified as master mechanics, get a 5% bump. The Teamsters mechanic supervisors discovered that after the first package was rejected and put that into their last offer. As you will see, it's Exhibit B. It was typed out when impasse was reached by the bargaining committee themselves, not the union. And that is at page 17 of your agenda package. So the result of the ATU mechanics getting a 5% increase is that with that increase, as a master mechanic, they get more than the supervisors. Please consider that as well. I'm done. Unless you have any questions, all I want to do is ask you to think about how to solve the problem. The problem being, how do we get to a three-year contract rather than something that's doomed to fail again? I'm happy to take questions, and I reserve the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Any questions from board members? Board Member Clendenin, Niebrich?
Mr. Chairman?
And wait, and Mr. Mechanic, let me, okay, you, okay, Mr. Mechanic, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, whenever it's appropriate, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'm a certified mediator, and I have rarely seen the case where the solution is so obvious as it is in this case. I mean, this is really not a complicated case. I'm ready, whatever the time is right.
Yes, sir. You'll be first recognized for motion time. Board Member Mechanic, Board Member Clendenin, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, you kind of made me uneasy when you were talking about certain employees deserving more than other employees. Just to set the record straight on that, it kind of did not set well with me. But I have a question. Are there merit increases as well? Do the employees, are they allowed merit increases within their...
Not to my knowledge. All increases are bargained.
Okay, so it's only, it's just basically this COLA that is included in the contract?
Well, if you call it COLA, we don't look at it as COLA. It's a wage increase, a general wage increase.
So all wage increases are, either they're included in the contract or they're not. Is, so maybe this is something for legal or someone else, is the ratification date and the length of time on the contract subject, can we, can we make an amendment to that? If we were to have a, can we, so that's not on the table, these, the two issues stand independently? So if we, if we made a change, we couldn't make this a three-year contract?
No, you can't change the length of the contract at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Niebrich, go ahead, sir. And then Board Member Hartfield.
One second. Thank you. I am confused when you say this becomes a two-year contract because the first year has already gone by. In my mind, this is a three-year contract, of which the first year has gone by, that retroactive pay may not be available. Can you help me understand what you mean when you say you convert this to a two-year contract?
No, we're not talking about converting it to a two-year contract as a bargaining matter. What I was, and I'm sorry to have confused you, as a practical matter, it becomes a two-year contract because the first year is gone and they got nothing.
I understand that that is a position...
And they're going to try to make up in year two and three what was not gained in year one.
The, and can you confirm my understanding that twice the union negotiated a tentative agreement, and twice the rank-and-file rejected that agreement?
No. First time, the union negotiated the tentative agreement with regard to the disaster pay relief, and that's Exhibit D.
Was it interest-based then, or was it the entire contract? Are you saying that there was a specific agreement related to that issue that didn't consider the other issues that got rejected?
No. The entire package got rejected, which included those two issues.
Okay, so there was a full TA, and then it was rejected, and then there was another bite at the apple, and then it got rejected. The reasons for it being rejected might have differed between TA 1 and TA 2, but there were two attempts, and then that's what led to the impasse that brought us here today.
That's accurate.
Okay. And then it sounds like the big issue from the union's perspective is what I would characterize as the fox in the hen house. They're not happy that the CEO has the, what they consider unilateral authority to determine when the emergency pay would begin, and they're asking for that to be determined by an external entity, whether it be the county commission, excuse me, the administrator and/or the EOC. Is that a correct understanding?
That is.
Okay. And then the union's position is that they haven't gotten anything for the first year, but what is their opinion with respect to this legacy emergency pay? And looking back at the data from the first presentation, that $750,000, that delta, only ran through mid-April. That's a six-and-a-half-month period. I would say that it's much bigger than maybe what we thought just a few moments ago. Do you have an opinion or input into that?
It was part of, if you want to call it legacy pay, all I'm telling you, it was part of their entire pay...
Legacy pay, legacy emergency provision, which resulted in much higher pay.
That is correct, but that was part of their entire pay package previously.
Okay. So what view could you offer to help me understand the position that the union has, which is that they benefited none in the first year despite preserving that legacy provision, even if they were to lose the retroactivity of any pay increase that's given here, not given, but discussed and provided?
We don't look at it as a trade-off, we look at it as a takeaway.
Okay. And then...
Which was agreed to, by the way, in December.
I understand, and then it was rejected.
Ultimately, the package was rejected. It was made as a package proposal.
To the extent that the union is, and I think I know the answer to this, but I want to ask it just to get it out there, the union's position is that they, but they want to preserve the benefits of the emergency pay, and in addition to that, they want to receive the retroactive pay of any increase. Are they willing to consider a clawback of the emergency pay in exchange for the retroactivity of any pay increase that's given today?
I don't know the answer. I suspect not.
I would suspect not, too. And so is that not both?
Well, you're asking, again, you're engaging right now in what we would call regressive thinking. That is, they had something, we're taking it away.
I come from a position of, I've been in the union, I'm sympathetic to labor. I've been in the union for 15-plus years. I've engaged in collective bargaining on the perspective of a rank-and-file membership. I've been in the shoes that you represent today, not as a lawyer, but as a union member. And these questions that I'm asking today without, are me to understand their thinking, to do the best that I can to get into their mind and to try to understand those things. So thank you, those are all my questions. I don't want to take up more time.
Thank you, sir. Let me further clarify, though, one is a question of base wages, the other is a question of overtime pay. They're two different animals.
Overtime pay connected to emergency provisions that escalate, it's not just overtime for working extra shifts.
Correct.
It's actually giving overtime pay rates to regular shifts during times of emergency. So I want to be clear that it's not overtime for extra shifts, it's an increased pay rate for regular shifts.
Well, they're not regular shifts in the sense that other employees aren't working as part of HOT's normal operation. They're working.
That's a good, you know what, maybe I can better understand that. Are you saying that compared to other labor groups, when these instances occur, those labor groups go home, don't work, and still get paid?
They do not still get paid.
Okay.
No, there's no doubt about that. But these people are required to work, and they deserve to get paid, and they're away from their families, and they can't prepare for the disaster, and they can't remediate the disaster.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Hartfield and Board Member Alphatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, I wanted to make sure I'm clear on a couple of things that you noted here, and thank you for your presentation. The first thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that your position is that the union is... Agreed... is agreeable that the EOC or the county administrator should be able to declare the state of emergency?
Absolutely.
Without exception?
Absolutely.
Okay. Kind of caught me off guard there, but okay. So the, the second item is, and this is what council member Clendenin alluded to now, I'm not going to challenge you in terms of semantics, but I, I do take exception to that leaders should get compensated more just because of, of, of a title. In fact, my position is that a leader should be willing to sacrifice or suffer for those that he or she is leading. So I don't want to argue, it is not a matter of semantics, I'm just saying what my position and why I take exception to what you said.
Yes, sir.
On the piece as it relates to COLA, retroactive pay is something that is seriously being considered based on your presentation. And a flat rate of 4% for the next two years would be acceptable. So 4.85 retroactively, 4.4% for the second year, and 4% for the third year. Is that the position of the union?
No.
Okay.
No. Our position is that this legislative body is free to impose whatever wage increases it deems appropriate for each year. We know that management saves money if it's backloaded. So we're looking at retroactive pay. 4.8% was management's proposal. Let's assume you do that, then you go up from there in second and third years. That way, you save money. And in addition to that, don't forget the ratification bonus, which was in the final package.
Ratification bonus?
That's $2,000. That's part of it, too. And if what you do is put together with what has been agreed on, given to the bargaining unit folks to vote on, and they ratify it, we think that should remain on the table as an inducement for them to do what they otherwise are reluctant to do.
Okay. Final, this is my closing, and I appreciate your comments, Tom, that I can, as a board member with fiduciary responsibility for this organization, I can't separate the union from the organization. HART has to move forward as a going concern. I can't separate the union's compensation and, and, and think about only how we support the Teamsters Union. Our responsibility is to act on behalf of HART.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Board member McAlphatrick, go ahead, sir.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I do want to make sure that I understand something clearly. Mr. Clendenin made note of this in his initial comment. I want to make sure that I understand your argument on the COLA increase for the 6% as opposed to the 4% was justified in part on the argument of what the position was. Is that, did I understand the argument correctly?
In part, yes.
Okay. How do you reconcile that with the definition of what a COLA increase should be, which is a cost-of-living adjustment? Because I, I see those two positions as being completely contrary to each other.
These are not COLA increases. We do not bargain for COLA increases. We bargain for general wage increases. And if you look in the contract, it doesn't say they are COLA increase. They are just specified increases.
And so you think that justifies a higher percentage based on the position of the, the work that someone's doing?
In part, yes, because the, the difference is not that great. Let's assume you have a non-supervisory employee making $25 an hour, for example. Okay? 5% of that is what? A dollar and a quarter? You have a supervisory employee, let's say, making $30 an hour. 5% of that is what? A buck fifty? Small difference. Consider that for assuming a large amount of responsibility.
So, sir, is, is your position then that the, the characterization of this as being a COLA increase that we've heard in the presentation prior to yours is incorrect?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and how do you respond to the, we, we were provided with some data that compared cost-of-living adjustments for other agencies, including PSTA for one, in comparison to the 6%? How do you reconcile and what is your, your argument as to why that's justified in this instance when it's not comparable to other agencies?
Well, first of all, we don't think HART is comparable to many other agencies either. You have a first-class transit system here. You have a first-class group of employees and managers here. They keep this operation running smoothly, and they deserve to be rewarded for it. I have not seen the comparison chart that we saw here today. We don't know whether they're union employees, non-union employees, or something else, managerial employees. We don't know. These are just overall broad numbers that are spread across a broad number of people. And we don't know what impacts they have on their budgets or what their operations are like.
So your argument is that those, those numbers, you don't believe that they're accurate assessments or comparisons?
I say, I don't know.
And because of the quality of HART, that's what justifies the higher percentage?
There's not enough information in those numbers for, for a response or justification.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Couple more. Board member Hobbs had his hand up, and then board member Myers. Anybody else? Go ahead, board member Hobbs.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for not being there in person out of the country, but this was important to, to talk to. I have a, kind of a two-part question, and, and one for the speaker and one maybe more of a HART-related question. We were giving a presentation a few months ago about the financials of HART and how the insolvency was coming up in a few years if things didn't change. So my question, you know, for the, for the presenter is, was that taken into consideration of the fact the organization is heading towards that when you came up with, with these numbers and this, this factor? And number two, more, maybe more for staff, is, you know, how would something like this lead towards possibly accelerating the timeline of the fact that, that HART is, is heading towards that? Thank you.
The answer is, if it was only a few months ago, no, it was not taken into account. There's been no bargaining since February. And number two, you know, HART is in a position to adjust fares, rates, whatever you charge in, in terms of sources of revenue, ask for grants, et cetera. These are things the union doesn't know, and only you folks know. I wish I could be more responsive than that, but I'm sorry, I plead ignorance. No, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Board member Myers, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've had a good ride at this rodeo, and can bring it to some consensus. So I think we should see if we have any rebuttal from councilman.
And, and Ms. McLean, go ahead, ma'am, unless if you had anything further to say.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that we didn't have any further, I'm sorry. That we didn't have any further questions from the board members for this presentation?
I actually did, very briefly, very briefly. I want to make sure.
And then if we could do rebuttal.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, is, sir, and thank you for that. Couple of quick things. I, I want to inquire what your rationale is on these positions with regards to the emergency finding and having our, the, the CEO, regardless of who or she is, be in collaboration with the appropriate emergency entities. Is that to have some professional advice on that as opposed to putting it in the hands of a CEO? And by the way, I would trust this guy with a whole bunch of stuff. We don't go on this guy, we go on the position. I, I just ask that in terms of what your rationale for that is.
Well, the rationale was that management wanted it to be in management's discretion. Before, it was in the governor's discretion, and we know where that led. And, you know, the question was, where is the decision-maker properly placed? And I would think, as a matter of common sense, it's with the decision-makers who understand Hillsborough County and are in a position to declare emergencies for Hillsborough County. That's the rationale.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And then my last question is my second-to-last one on what I call the buffer, the 14 days that y'all are seeking. Number one, pardon my ignorance, is there presently a buffer on that? I don't believe there is. And number two, what is the rationale for that? I think I know what it is, but I, I want to know.
There currently is no buffer. There was a 90-day guarantee. And so the reason for the buffer, though, is that, remember, when other folks are at home and they're attending to their families and remediating whatever happens, these folks aren't. So they need time in order to do that, number one, because they continue working. So they should be paid for the loss of that time as sort of a compensation for it.
Great. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Board member Clendenin, go ahead, sir.
On that point, wouldn't that have been a better to, it seems like you're trying to force something into an article that probably doesn't belong, because I, I hear your, your point is well-taken about remediation post some apocalyptic kind of storm, you know, like we had last year. But I would think that that would have to be, that would, should have been in a different article, negotiated in a different article, because not necessarily guaranteed carte blanche, the way you presented it in this particular proposal.
This was the article that was negotiated, I tell you, by both management and the union, and management TA'd it, and the union TA'd it back in December of last year.
Oh, but, but isn't the position now because this was not ratified? It doesn't matter what the actions were in December, this is all, I, I mean, whether it was TA'd or not, it's moot?
If, if, the question is, you know, can you impose new contract language? You can, but...
Isn't that the jeopardy of, of not reaching and not ratification, is that everything's on the table and we, you know, you're really risking it all?
Well, that may be your position.
Right. I mean, that is, because that is kind of the reality, though. Like, so let's say this, this, this body recommended XYZ, it goes to the membership, and they don't ratify again, they run the risk of losing further pay of, of guaranteed pay in, in, as, as we go in this three-year period. Because already, they've already jeopardized that first year of pay, they potentially could jeopardize further pay if they don't ratify the next round, correct?
Oh, that's accurate.
Yeah, okay.
But by the same token, what you're doing is pushing off bargaining to the subsequent year, so that bargaining consists of regaining and trying to get ahead.
Hence why I asked if we could change the bargaining period, or the, the term of this contract to this, because that would have solved...
No, sir.
That would, that would, that would have solved two problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Next, we go to rebuttal, as requested by the parties and consented to by the board. Our board counsel has recognized the rebuttal.
So, Mr. Adams, are you, you're going to take your six minutes of rebuttal?
I am. So, Mr. Clendenin is absolutely correct. The problem is, is that these, some of these proposals were TA'd, which meant that management and the union agreed on them and presented them to the union membership to vote on, and they rejected them. So the point's well-taken that, you know, it doesn't matter what happened. And, and the question of retroactivity is a really important question, and I'm glad everybody's focused on that. But the struggle that management has with that is that the union rejected it once in, in December of 2024, so that's 10 months, 10 months away, and then they rejected it again in February of 2025. So I'm back to my $784,000. So if you divide that by 11, by 11 months, it's roughly $71,000 per month. So by the membership rejecting the TA, which their own negotiating committee recommended, they're putting $71,000 of money in their pocket per month, and I've done the math now, Ms. Williams, it's $15,000 per week, because I think you wanted to know what it was per week. And, and that's the struggle here. And so it's inequitable to management, and, and I would suggest it's fiscally irresponsible to give retroactivity and the $784,000. The union had every incentive not to come to terms on what they're now telling us. They agree that 90-day guaranteed time and a half really isn't necessary, really, really isn't what they wanted. But their actions, I tell my kids this all the time, their actions speak louder than their words. So by the membership rejecting it, they're, like I said, putting $71,000 per month in their pocket for 11 months, and, and that's, that's a significant problem. So on the premium pay for the mechanics, that's outside the scope of today's hearing. I think that is better off discussed when they continue the negotiations. I understand there's not a lot of objection to that, but it's, it's just outside the scope of today's hearing, and I ask that you don't consider that. On the, on the comparative pay, we've accumulated some additional statistics. Lynx Pay, and, and all of these are, just with the exception of the Department of Revenue that I think I cited, all of these are for collective bargaining agreements. These are not non-collective bargaining agreements, just to clarify the record. Lynx received 5%, 4%, and 3%. Broward, which is one of the larger counties and fairly comparable to us, received 2.5% in '23 and 2.5% in '24. Atlanta received in the last year 3%. Miami, 2024, received 3%, 2025, 3%, and 2024, 4%.
Thank you.
You, you're welcome, I'm sorry. Another point with the retroactivity, and, and I forget who made the comment, so I apologize, but the budget is important, and keep in mind, the retro, if you decide to do retroactivity, that's not in the budget. And so that's going to be a, a variance from your budget that you're trying to, to manage. With respect to who makes the decision, I don't know that management has any struggle with the start of the decision. Look, I, I will tell you, the ATU contract, as I understand it, allows the CEO to make the decision. So for continuity purposes, I think you'd be crazy to have a different standard in your different contracts. So I do think the best way to handle it is to have the CEO be the person who makes the decision. He goes to the EOC meetings, and he hears what's there, and he can coordinate that with the other agencies. But again, I go back to my original point, which is, this, you know, the EOC people don't tell the sheriffs what to do, and when they start to get overtime, they don't tell the police, they don't tell the fire. You need to have faith in your own CEO to make the correct decisions for this organization.
And, and Ms. McLean, can we have questions during his remarks? Because we have a couple.
I just want to make a point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was very clear when Commissioner Myers made it. The county administrator is the final say, hard stop. It's not a negotiation on when an emergency is declared. So we keep having discussion around it. It's, it is what it is.
Yeah, it's not the, I'm sorry, let me be more clear. It's not the declaration, it's the decision of when the time and a half kicks in. So it's an operations issue, is my point. It's not the decision of the declaration, it's when the, the, you know, when we start to change the route structure, when we send the buses up to the high grounds. And so that's my point. So if I wasn't clear on that, I apologize. And look, I don't mean to, to, you know, throw stones at the EOC and Bonnie Wise, she's a brilliant and has done a great job for us over the last couple of years, especially in some serious adversity. But anyway, tho, those are kind of my points. Let me take a quick look here at my notes. And, and just, you know, getting back to the budgeting point, you know, you were presented with a significant presentation on the financial situation, and look, it's, like I said, the union deserves, you know, a, a living wage and a cost of living that's appropriate, but you're not in a position to, to be overly generous, as I understand it today. I did, I, I wanted to make sure I passed out the motions. Did those get, make their way around?
I have.
Okay, so I will let you handle that then. And I don't have any other things to say unless there's any other questions from you guys.
And we'll take questions beforehand, Ms. McLean?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to call for the question.
Um, yes. So I guess procedurally for that, we have to take a motion on that, correct? Or strike that, take a vote on that?
Well, I, I would like to just...
And I have things I have to read according to my anchorman script, so...
Right. I would just like to advise, thank you, Mr. Mechanic, but I would, I would like to advise and request whether Mr. Pilicki would like to take advantage of his rebuttal time as well. You have, in my timeframe, you have 3.5...
And beforehand, we did have a motion to call the question. Do we have to take a vote on that? Because I...
As a general point of order...
May I make everyone's life easy? I'm not going to exercise rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, sir. You called point of order.
Mr. Mechanic might not see it, but the motion would be out of order because...
because we haven't got to Section 8, where we were supposed to do deliberation, at which point he could call the question, and I would be in favor of any deliberation on it.
That's what I was inquiring, okay, thank you. So, so we will...
Well, I'm sorry, the audio broke up. What was the explanation?
Go ahead, sir.
The, the explanation is that subsection 8, item 8 on the agenda, is where we're supposed to enter our actual deliberation, which is when your point to call the question and end deliberation would be appropriate. And I would be happy to second it if you want to ride into that.
Okay, so I...
Thank you, Mr. Wassel.
So I need to read parts over here under Section 8, excuse me, and then we will entertain the motion. Next, the board will deliberate on the following two issues. Issue number one, Article 6.4 Civil and Natural Disorder Operating Procedures Emergency. The current language of Article 6.4 declared emergency provides employees required to work during hurricanes, tropical storms, or other state-declared emergencies in Hillsborough County shall receive time and a half for all hours worked during such periods, provided that such emergency is no longer than 90 consecutive days per event. Issue two, Article 41.4 Wages. The issue with Article 41.4 is the amount of cost of living increases each year during the term of the CBA and of retroactive application. Counsel is recognized to lead the deliberations. Deliberations will be held. Now, at this time, we will have, we have a board, or strike that, a motion to call the question on the ultimate motions here that we're going to be voting on by Board Member Mechanic. We have a second by Vice Chair Wassel. And so we take a vote on that, correct, without any discussion, correct? Okay, so Board Member King, I cannot recognize you until we take, but I'll recognize you first afterwards, so let's...
Point of order.
Point of order, exactly, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to ensure that the members of this board have an opportunity, if they wish to either have discussion or to be able to have clarifying information, to adequately deliberate the question before it's called. And I think it's inhibiting debate, like, calling without the opportunity to have it.
And, and I plan on voting no, by the way, on it for that very reason. But Ms. McLean, as our counsel, I want to make sure, do I, do I do, because I haven't chaired city council in six years, do I have to do a vote on the call the question motion without any debate on that motion?
I'm just tearing off what you draw by those...
And wait, and, and wait, and Board Member Mechanic just... Okay, you, okay. So, okay, there you go, okay, so that is withdrawn. So Board Member King, you're recognized, sir.
Point of order, sir. What exactly are we voting on in this? Oh, okay, point of order. What exactly are we voting on in this particular instance?
So, Board Member Mechanic is going to be making a motion. I don't know what that is, but it'll probably, his proposal on the issues that we have heard today that are in dispute.
Okay.
So, and if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I could just kind of bring us back to what you have in front of you, and then what has been provided to me to hand out from Mr. Adams. And then also, I would like to make sure that everybody has their packet, which was the proposal from the union representative, Mr. Pilicki, as well. What we are doing now is for deliberation, if you want to have the conversation amongst yourselves with all the information that has been provided to you. I understand that it's, you know, it's been a lot of information and time has passed, but these are, these are issues that I'm sure that you would want to have all of the information to consider. Then what I have in front, and if you could help me. Yes, thank you. And we could also, this is from Mr. Adams, and he is suggesting what you could consider as your motions per the issue. We need to have motions per issue. So I've got the information correct. And also, and Mr. Pilicki, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but on the, in your board packet, similar to what you're receiving from Mr. Adams, so that you have both sides for consideration, there was language that was proposed by the union, and so you have that to consider as well. Also, per the statute, I'm sorry to continue and to make the waters a little bit more murky. But as was indicated previously, you can accept one side or the other. Or in the public interest, you can make the determination on each, on each issue that you feel best serves the public interest, including those employees of the public. So it doesn't have to be one or the other as presented to you. You can go that way. But during the course of the conversation and your deliberations, you might make changes to the languages that are proposed for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. And just quickly, do the virtual folks have these? They, okay, good, thank you. Board Member Niebrich, go ahead, sir.
Well, if we could put it up, please, so I can know that they could see. Because we, we did, here we go. So that is language that was proposed by management, provided to me just now, so that's why it's not in your packet, by Mr. Adams. And here's a copy from Mr. Pilicki.
Here.
Give that one. Well, if you have one, I can write that.
Sure.
Just trying to be polite. So, so I can take notes. So I want to make sure if we can take 30 seconds, people that are attending virtually can see the language. And then if you want to continue with your deliberations, if anyone wants to make a motion on one of the issues going forward, we're in that posture right now.
Okay, Board Member Niebrich, anybody else? And I know Board Member Mechanic, we'll all recognize you next, sir. Did I, anybody else after Mechanic? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Just a brief understanding question from counsel's description today. For the purposes of discussion and any motions, we are constrained to the two issues before us. And even though we can adapt and/or modify the proposals, we have to stay constrained to those two issues. And we are not to consider the proposal by the union, even though management doesn't want us to, the 5% pay increase for the certified qualification. We're not allowed to even consider that in today's hearing, is that correct?
Let me answer one at a time. So yes, you're constrained to the two disputed issues in front of you. It's union's position, if I'm reiterating, that they, the increase in pay for the management is part of the wages dispute. And so I just want to, but beyond those two issues, so the emergency and the increase in wages, not cola, cola, the 4% and the 6%, and the management supervision pay is, that's union's position that is all in the wages.
So that, I'm sorry to be confused, because I am. The Article 6 provision that the union is asking for, for a 5% premium pay increase for maintenance supervisors who qualify for certified master technician, we today cannot even consider that because we are constrained to the wage question and to the emergency question. Am I correct in that understanding?
That would be, so you have to stay with the two articles. I don't want to take a position with regard to management versus union. I need to reflect for the board. So it's, it's union's position that you can consider that, and it's management's position that that is not within the wages article.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who is after Mr., or was it, oh, Mechanic, David Mechanic. Board Member Mechanic, and does anybody wish to go ahead and have dibs on speaking next? Okay, Board Member Wassel, anybody? Board Member Clendenin. Board Member Mechanic, you said you wish to make some motions, sir.
Well, at this point, I'll just make some comments, because I think people are not wanting to vote yet. The reason I'm saying this is so obvious is, I think we, so far, I haven't heard anybody supporting the idea of paying time and a half for non-emergency condition. I mean, the idea of that is like absurd. I can't even imagine how somebody agreed to do that. But beyond that, I think it's pretty clear we're not going to agree to do that anymore. So that issue seems to be put to bed. I think it would be quite simple to simply defer to the county administrator as to the declaration of an emergency. She is the legal person who is responsible for doing that to begin with. So why on earth would we want to pick some other method of measuring how the event is taking place? I do want to make clear that it's only for events affecting heartlight operations. I don't think we should be giving time and a half just because there is an emergency in some other locations. So, to me, that's another one that's very obvious. By way of this wage thing, I think there's something wrong with the idea that if management doesn't agree, and I realize that the union also didn't agree on certain proposals, but management has an incentive to not agree in order for a year to go by so that we could say, oh, okay, well, we didn't have to give them a wage increase last year because we were negotiating. That doesn't seem right to me, it doesn't sit well with me. So I would, if I do get a chance to make a motion, I will propose a, an increase for, that would be retroactive. My, my main proposal would be to just simply pick an index, which reflects, reasonably reflects the cost of living increase, and no more and no less. That's all, something similar to what social security does would be fine with me. Or if you can't agree on an index, I would just say a flat 3%. And I would make it retroactive to 2020. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Board Member Mechanic, Vice Chair Wassel, then Board Member Clendenin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We need to get an item on the table so we can start deliberating each issue at a time. So since I'm recognized, let's get the emergency order item on the table. I'm adamantly opposed to the county administrator being the person because this was a referendum-created individual organization. This is outside of the bounds of the county government. We do not operate it. The county administrator is the one in charge of emergency management operations for all of those government functions. And if we really wanted to go back to the emergency operation statutes, which is Florida Chapter 252.38, the very last sentences of that clearly delineates that no emergency order is supposed to go longer than a seven-day period, allowable extensions up to 42, only by, seven weeks, seven days at a time, only by a vote of the local governing board, which we don't do. For all of those reasons, this is a, this is a different situation. The county government and their emergency operation procedures have nothing to do with HART. HART is a business. We have a CEO who's in charge of running those operations. So in no way is, should it be in the realm, and I'm pretty sure if Administrator Wise was here, she would say, please, Lord, do not put that on me, I don't want to be involved. And I can, I can guarantee you that. So I'm going to go ahead and move to adopt the language that's in front of us for issue number one, which is for the legislative body to adopt HART Management's recommended language for Article 6.4 of the Teamsters Local 79 Collective Bargaining Agreement for fiscal year 2025 to 2027, which reads as follows, 6.4 Emergencies: Employees Required to Work During Hurricanes, Tropical Storms, or Other Emergencies in Hillsborough County That Directly Effect HART's Operations Shall Receive Time and One Half For All Hours Worked During Such Periods. The emergency period will commence when operational service levels are adversely impacted and will end after HART resumes normal operational service levels, and I will add, to be determined by the CEO.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Board Member Donna Sipeta. And now we have a line over here. I see you, Board Member King, of folks to discuss. We have Clendenin, Niebrich, King. I would ask you all, if you could, to tailor it to the motion here. I'll give some thoughts on it and so forth, and then we can deal with the second issue. Go ahead, sir.
I don't disagree with Commissioner Wassel on his points. I think they're well-taken. I think that that pretty much surmises how this operation should work during emergencies. But I actually have a hard time, I understand we have two issues. I have a hard time because at a bargaining table, you know, it's not just, it's, you know, you have to look at the whole picture. So I really want to kind of, because somebody's going to give, somebody's going to win, somebody's going to lose. I would really like to have us look at these, and I'd probably make a motion to combine that issue with number two and adopt the management's language, except that I would say includes a cost of living increase of 4% in 2025, 4% in 2026, 4% in 2027, with the retroactive pay. And, and then adopt the rest of the language, including that there'd be no ratification bonuses to pay to members of the union. So by adopting management's language in total for number one, we actually, because 4% is a comparative salary increase that other, other employees in the Tampa area, and our Tampa employees are, are folks, got 4% increases.
And if I may, Board Member Clendenin, is this a substitute motion you're seeking?
I'd make a motion to amend to include issue...
Okay, amend.
Language of issue number two with those modifications.
So, I would assume I'd have to ask to make or the motion if you would amend it?
That would just be a vote. If it gets a second, it would be a vote.
Is it a, is that a substitute?
That's just amended.
That's an amendment.
If I could, before we even get to that, I understand, following Robert's rules of order, but if I could even get to that, we need to take votes on the individual issues.
Separately.
Not, we cannot combine them, please.
Okay.
So I'd like to reiterate that...
Can I, parliamentary inquiry, why would that be necessary? Why couldn't we include them to have one vote on both? Because if you're taking from one part, why shouldn't I be able to give somewhere else? And basically, we're in effect at the bargaining table right now, giving and taking.
I understand that, but under the statute, we, to take the individual issues that are at...
So it's statutory?
Yes, and I would like to, and that way you've got a clear understanding of what's going on. You can take into consideration what you are acting upon, and you could deliberate, you know, with the knowledge of the two different actions.
So following, following legal advice that this is statutory and that I can't do what I just asked, I will, I will rescind my proposed amendment. But understanding with the, part of the discussion is I will support Commissioner Wassel's motion on this, with the understanding that we come back to number two, I would look for comparative wages that other employees have gotten at a commensurate rate, which has been 4%, and, and make that retroactive without the, without the ratification bonus.
Thank you, sir. We have Board Member Niebrich, then Board Member King, anyone else? Okay, go ahead, sir.
I withdraw my request, it was related to previous discussion.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you, Chair. I move to amend line four...
Microphone, microphone.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I move to amend line four, deleting the word emergencies, replacing it with the phrase "periods of emergency." Because we talk about periods farther down in the, in the order. And this would just clear it up, the language.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, and to our counsel, it is appropriate to take a vote on that, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Could I just clarify, could you say that again, please, sir?
Okay, line four, delete the word emergencies. It's the fourth word N, fifth word N, fourth, fifth word N, replacing that with periods of emergency to make it agree with the remainder of the text.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, thank you.
And so to clarify, this is merely a motion to amend the proposed motion, not to pass the motion, correct?
I'll just accept the friendly amendment because it's ridiculous. Let's go.
Okay, there, okay, so it has been hereby adopted by, by Vice Chair Wassel. Any other comments on this? Yes, sir, Macalfe, go ahead, sir.
Just clarification, is the motion that's pending, does it have a change to the very end? Or...
No.
Mine just says, "to be determined by the CEO," that was all that I said. But he's just changing line four, where it says, "for other emergencies."
No, I meant it's to your original motion. If, per the CEO was part of your motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Unless you're not agreeable, then I can remove that, too. Whatever you want. Just...
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I just want to know what we were voting on.
Any other comments? Okay, briefly, I'll give my thoughts on this, which is the proposed language right now. Obviously, I would trust CEO Dravenville with a whole lot of things, including this. The proposed language, though, I don't mean the one that Vice Chair Wassel is, is seeking here, but it says, "CEO in collaboration with the EOC." It doesn't vest that power in EOC. It vested in our CEO in conjunction with the EOC. So for me, that's preferable, but it, just to give a rationale, I guess. And Board Member King? Go ahead, sir.
That seems kind of amorphous.
I don't know what that means, I'm sorry.
Well...
I really don't. I really don't.
Ambiguous.
Okay, there you go.
It, it creates a level of ambiguity between our CEO and the executive officer, Emergency Management Officer for the county as to who makes that decision. Our CEO makes that decision after consulting with them, and they agree on it? What happens if they don't agree? What if our CEO wants to do it anyway?
And, and so let's do this. How about this, guys? And, and Board Member Williams, if you wanted to say something, because you sure, okay. Let's go ahead and have a vote, unless if you had anything else, sir, just because I know folks want to move forward. I think we all know, so let's, go ahead, roll call.
So couldn't we be?
And Board Member King, did you, did you, I didn't want to cut you off, sir.
I want to clarify, since it's my motion. But this is in, when an emergency order, the, the last line is not saying that he declares the emergency order to be determined by the CEO. It's just that he's the one determining when we resume to normal operational service levels, parentheses, pre-event levels. It's, that's a very separation, that's a big separation in those two sentences. He's not deciding when the emergency order is. He's deciding when we have resumed to a normal operational service level.
Well, then who does?
He does.
No, on the front end, who decides that we have an emergency?
There's two, there's two different, under 252 dot 38, there's only two people. It's the governor and then the county administrator. The governor can look at the county administrators and say that he doesn't like it and rescind it at will, et cetera, et cetera. That's all covered in 25. And if we need to say, you know, I, I think it's going too far. We're, we're not the county. We're not the emergency management's operations. This is specifically about when we're in an emergency order, whether whichever legal body, just as described by Florida statute, declares one, which there's only two here. Whenever they decide one, he gets to decide when we've returned to resumes normal operational service levels. Does that sound pretty fair and clear? Okay, all right.
Board Member Hartfield, then we take a vote. Go ahead, sir.
One additional point of clarification, which actually landed us here, is that when the governor declares a state of emergency, and it is, say, in Zaire or anywhere else besides Hillsborough County, then we're prompted into this action of emergency. And are, so where do we go from there? If we don't delineate now, who's declaring the state of emergency? We're going to be right back here. I think I'm.
I don't know. I don't, I don't really understand how we're going in this circle. And it's always consecutively this board where we have Robert's rules orders. There's two people, 252 dot 38. That's the emergency orders and operations of the state of Florida. The governor and the administrator in this county can declare those. The county commissioners can extend it by seven-day periods up to forty-two days, as described at the end of the statute. Only two people, okay? There's only two people. It's very clear. Before, what land us here is that they just said, the governor did it, here's ninety days of pay. Now we're saying, hey, three days have gone by, it's ended, and he says, okay, we're back up to normal routes, normal transit times, employees can come back in. Very simple.
Okay, roll call, please.
Chair Viera?
No.
Director Wosel?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Director Cameron Cepeda?
Yes.
Director McLenden? I'm sorry, Clenden. I apologize.
Well, you know, I've been called many things.
Thank you. Uh, yes.
Thank you. Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director McAlphatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
No.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Niebrick?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, board. And now we move forward to the second issue, which would be the proposal for wages. People are going to be recognized starting right now. Did you put your, did you want to be recognized?
Yes.
Have that.
Perfect. I, from what I can count so far, I don't understand how we could possibly reconcile giving retroactive pay on top of the 785 grand. It's, it's literally rewarding bad behavior and incentivizing further negotiations in this regard for them to say, well, we can just delay for eighteen to months to two years, and we can be rewarded on incentives that we wouldn't have otherwise possibly have been granted. I don't even know how this board could even, could even consider that, much less the very salient points that were brought up potentially by Member Niebrick, I can't remember, about us leading towards insolvency. And this is just another unexpected financial burden that would exist on the already difficult job of the CEO. Let's overlook the fact that this was just a very bad policy to begin with that led us to this point. So we can debate, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion so that we can debate the issue that's on the floor, on the floor, which is exactly what was presented to us again today. I fully agree that there's no way that fiscally we could overlook the 785 grand. We're just going to have to consider the combination of that they would have gotten a five percent raise, but instead they got 785 grand because of delays created by their, their own negotiating team, that I will move for the legislative body to adopt Heart Management's proposal for wages under Article 41.4 of the Teamsters Local 79 Collective Bargaining Agreement for fiscal year 20 to 25 to 20 to 27. That includes cost of living wage increases of four percent for fiscal year 26 and four percent for fiscal year 2027. No cost of living wage increase will be retroactive. There will be no ratification bonus paid to members of the union.
Second.
We have a motion, second, I believe it was, by Board Member King. A motion made by Vice Chair Wosel. Discussion. Board Member Hartfield.
Uh, this question's for our CEO. Did we encumber the, uh, COLA increase for, for this union?
So we did not budget for the 4.85 for the first year. We budgeted for the four percent starting on the second year.
Okay.
And, and just to, just to put into context, you know, we budgeted four percent for the first year of the contract.
Okay.
I offered 4.85 for the incentive to get rid of the emergency pay. That was the reason why I offered more than we actually budgeted for. But right now, there is no budgeted amount for any retroactive pay.
Okay.
Board Member Niebrick, I'm sorry, Williams, did you wish to speak?
Uh, yes.
Oh, go, and then Niebrick. Oh, and your mic, I'm sorry.
Sorry, do we bu- budget for 784?
Well, we don't initially budget, we budget on the trend, so we don't really know how many declarations are going to come out, but definitely wasn't prepared for FY25 and almost a whole year, they were getting paid the emergency pay.
Thank you.
Board Member Niebrick.
Thank you. I, I just want to understand this motion that I am, well, no retroactive pay, that I understand. As far as the base pay rate, does this motion include an increase that would have been paid had they reached the agreement so that when they applied the 2026 pay increase of four percent, does it add to it, or are we starting from the same? Does this motion start from the same pay rate that was in effect on September 30th of, of, you know, basically last fiscal year?
Yeah, and, and I think you were trying to get clarity on that earlier, and you didn't get it. So this management proposal right here, is it anticipated off of what they would have been increased to from fiscal, in fiscal year 2025 with that 4.85%? Is the 4.8, um, four percent proposal based off of them having anticipated that 4.85%? Or is it four percent based off of their 2024 rates?
It's based off their current rate of the old, old contract.
2024.
So the no retroactive, no ratification bonus, and a pay increase from the base that was effective 2024. So this, uh, this motion would result in all of the pay for 2025 has been paid, and any extra, if we wanted to use those terms, came in the form of that emergency pay that they received.
Essentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Board Member Clendenon, did you wish to speak, sir?
I do. I, I think the proposal by Commissioner Wosel is, is punitive in nature that, and this is why I was concerned about dividing the issue, because we had, taking up issue one separately from issue two, because with issue one, we've, we've already taken action, which would, I'm sure by some folks, fix a problem of folks getting compensated for work that was being performed, maybe not deserved it then. But it's still affecting folks' pocketbook. And then if we take up issue two as proposed, again, every other employee that I know of in, in Hillsborough County received a, well, I'll just call it a cost of living wage increase in '25, that we, so they would, they would be deprived of that increase. They would also be deprived of the compounding factor that you just insinuated or spoke about. So I would still like to give parity to these employees based on every other employee in Hillsborough County of four percent, four percent, four percent. I think that's fair. I think it is, you know, it's, 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 it's in line with, and maybe a little bit less generous than what Heart had initially proposed. But by providing that four percent in '25, four percent in '26, and four percent in '27, it, it, it's, again, it keeps these, these employees in, in an equitable range with other employees in, in the area. I think we're, I don't believe, I, I think that's a reasonable thing to propose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Hartfield.
Thank you. I think it, uh, the way it's listed here, or noted here, it is punitive. The union did not take advantage of a situation that they created. This was in our bylaws, and they went by what was stated there, and they were able to leverage that for us to punish them for utilizing what was in our bylaws. I don't think that was, that's fair. I don't know, I'm not settled on what a COLA or whatever we're calling it retroactively would look like in terms of a percentage or a number. But I think punishing them for using the bylaws that we created without punishing ourselves looks a little hypocritical to me.
Vice Chair Wosel.
When did this contract expire?
September of '24.
Thank you. We're not punishing them. The contract expired. It's just that the requirement is that since we reached a negotiating impasse, that there is just a continuance of what was in there, correct?
Correct.
That we were saying the entire time should not be in there.
Correct.
It's not punitive. It's just accepting the reality that this would not have been in there, and they would not have received this otherwise. We're saying that they are getting their pay for last year increase. It's just that instead of you getting it in the 4.85% and realizing it that way, you realized it in receiving $784,000 of what would have not been received through that emergency clause because it would not have been accepted. That's, that's why. It's not punitive. It's just, it's just accepting the reality that we're running a, an organization that has a financial model, and they received 784 grand, and we're realizing that through this motion. That's exactly what it's doing.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak whenever it's my turn?
Yes, sir. Board Member Mechanic, Clendenon, Niebrick. And let's go quickly, folks, so that we can bring this in for a close, but go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the, the issue.
And wait, it was Mechanic, then Clendenon, then Niebrick, so, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead. Uh, Board Member Mechanic, go ahead, sir.
Well, I, I'm, I, I may not be totally following this debate, but I, I think there's something wrong with saying that the 700,000, I'm just going to use a round number, which was paid to them pursuant to the prior existing contract, somehow offsets a cost of living increase, or whatever you want to call that, I don't care. But whatever that percentage increase is, it's, it's apples and oranges. You're saying, oh, we, we contractually were obligated to give you these apples over here, so, but, and we gave that to you, but therefore we're not going to give you what every other county employee got, which is a percentage increase in his salary because we gave you these apples, which we were contractually obligated to give you. I mean, I just don't get that argument. I don't get it at all. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Board Member Clendenon, then Niebrick. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mechanic, because it was one of the points that I was going to try to make is exactly what you just described. Each one of these articles are fought for at the bargaining table. They're fought and lost at the bargaining table. And that particular article was something that is, is completely set aside from this issue. I think even taking into, that into account is improper for us to even consider that because the, the article that we're discussing is separate and apart from it, as has been, has been highlighted by our legal staff as well, that we have to, we take these issues one at a time. So now, right now, we're only talking about this, the, these, these, I'm just going to use it because it's so easy, cost of living increases. I'm assuming that every other employee that works for Heart that's not covered by collective bargaining received a cost of living, a cost of living increase in 2025. I don't know if, if it's appropriate to even ask that question at this point. Can I ask that question? Did non-bargaining employees get a cost of living increase in '25?
They have, but it's been many years that non-bargaining has not got any wage increase.
But I mean, I, but in 2025, they got one.
2025, I did budget four percent.
Four percent. So, so in other, in other words, by, by not giving them, we're, we're punitive, we're penalizing people for belonging to the, to the, to the union. And again, I think it's highly inappropriate to talk about this, this figure that was fought for, for pay, whether you liked it or not. It was completely separate, apart from cost of living increases. So we should just be talking about cost of living increases. If every other employee of Heart got a cost of living increase in '25, the bargaining unit people should be, should be able to get that, enjoy that same amount. Now granted, we're, even if we do that 4-4-4, it's not what the union wanted. It's still dividing the baby. We're still, we're still, you know, it's, it's still, it's still give and take. So I think it's a very reasonable proposal of 4-4-4.
And before I recognize Board Member Niebrick, because I believe her last speaker, our CEO wanted to say something. Go ahead, sir.
And just to clarify, I've been in negotiations thirty years. This is strategic negotiations, when we prolong the, you know, they can have, they can be collecting their time and a half, and then put, you know, put aside the wage, and now we're going to come back after paying them all. It was, it was a package deal. It was, you give up this, we give you this. So now, very strategic on their part, is let's prolong it. So here we are today, and we're going to, we're going to, after paying them the 785,000, we're going to give them retro four percent on top of that. I just wanted to clear that out.
Thank you, sir. Board, Board Member Niebrick, then Board Member Cepeda. It's me.
As part of the question of what's in the public's interest, the, the best outcome, even though it can't be guaranteed, is that what we do here today is ratified by the membership, and we now have a contract term that runs us through 2027. The other outcome is that they don't ratify it. It's imposed upon them for the next twelve months, and they either ratify some new agreement, or we're back here in about a year. If we could, and, and this is where the question of retroactivity comes in. If the, the 750,000 or whatever it was paid, and I would argue that it, it looks like it was only through April. So I actually think it's a much higher number for the eleven months or for the twelve months of the 2025 year. It's much higher than 750,000. To me, that does equate to what would have been a retroactive bonus and what would have been a pay increase for the fiscal year 2025 period. Where I do get a little bit of discomfort, but because it can't be guaranteed that they will ratify it, I'm not sure where I will fall on it, that the benefit of compounding should be applied. And four percent in '25, not paid retroactively, four percent on top of that for '26, paid on a go-forward basis, and then four percent in '27, which again would compound. So you'd have four percent, four percent, four percent. The distinction being '25 is not retroactively paid. It's just used to calculate the wage on a go-forward basis. And the rationale for that is the emergency pay that this work group benefited during the time that the impasse has been in existence. And so I know that's not what's on the table. Those are some of my views. I don't know if there's sympathy to those arguments, and if so, to what extent that changes thinking, but thank you.
I'll accept that amendment.
And Board Member Cameron Cepeda. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention quickly that making this retroactive could create significant budgetary challenges. Just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? And Board Member Wosel?
Yes, yes, sir.
Do you want to make, oh, do you want to make that a friendly amendment?
I, I would like to make that a friendly amendment.
And I actually do agree, that what he's saying is that they were paid, but their, their 4% for this year needs to be based off of them, assuming what it would have been if they received it in 2025, and they did not, they got a lump sum, but their, their next year's pay does need to base, be based off of the assumption that they got that 4% increase. That's what you're saying. Yeah, and I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
We need a second on that amendment, even though you're accepting it.
Does the original second, seconded, it was Board Member King. Do you second that, sir?
I'll second it.
Okay, great. I heard Board Member Schisler was to speak. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair. I'm not sure that we, that that's going to be something that's going to be easy to explain going forward in the future to the rank and file. That's going to cause a significant amount of, of concern, I think, on their part. Well, I didn't get that, so how can you give me an increase on this? And I'm not sure if there's any, any, any federal labor laws that are going to be filed by, by jumping, or, 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 or increasing something that really wasn't increased, but you're not getting an increase, or an increase you never really got, and I'm afraid that's going to open a can of worms. I, I don't want to be perceived as, as penalizing anybody, but everybody is whole, nobody's lost any money, it's, they, they, they got 700 and however many thousands of dollars in, in overtime, and, I'm sorry, Haiti and Israel did not affect operations here, but they got paid for it anyway. So, you know, I, I just feel that the original motion, as, as Vice Chair Wosel presented, I think solves the, the overall issue, 4% for '26 and 4% for '27, without any kind of retroactivity to be called for. That's just my position on that. I think we're opening a can of worms that's going to be very difficult to contain and explain going forward. It's just going to be very, very confusing, I believe, to the rank and file.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Really quickly, Board Member Niebrich, go ahead, sir.
Just, to the extent that that input does create issues, the same outcome can be achieved by imply, applying a 2026 pay increase of 8.16%, which is the benefit of compound, and then 2027 is 4%, no retroactivity, no retrobonus, and no concern, but it's really a pay rate table question, more so than it is a question of, there's, there's no part of the motion that's being considered that would provide retroactive pay, and there's no part that would give it a ratification bonus. Those are not being considered. The, the concept that's being considered is the benefit of compounding, and that can be expressed either as a 4% for '25, a 4% for '26, and a 4% for '27, or we can just express it in different percentages and put the benefit of that compounding at 2026, to the extent that those concerns that you just expressed have, have traction.
Okay. We have Board Member King, go ahead, really quick, sir.
All right, just to clarify, we're talking about using it as an abstract number going forward for calculating what the 4% for 2026 and 4% for 2027 would be, had that actual 4% been paid in the first place?
Yes, it's the purpose of arithmetic, it's not for the purpose of retroactivity.
And Board Member Myers, didn't see you, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't think we're ever going to get this 4% the way we want it, okay, but it's still 4%, okay? I need to leave, I'll cancel a meeting, push it back and shove, and I think if I leave, we won't have a quorum, am I correct? We have denied?
So, let, let's go ahead and take a vote? I think it's important.
Because I need to, I want to vote, but I need to meet these people.
I move, I call the question.
We don't, we'll just take the vote. Let's go ahead and take the vote. I, I was going to give some thoughts, my, I, folks.
So, what, what, so we're voting on the amended mo...
Yes, on Vice Chair Wosel's motion that was seconded by Board Member King.
No, we have an amendment to his...
Yes.
Is, 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 would, I think probably for simplicity, if you're going to do that, you probably should go with this compounding percentage, the 8% and then the 4%, so, for simplicity.
Is that accepted?
No, it's, 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 it's very simple.
And we want, Board Member Myers here, so let's...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, can you state the motion?
Yes, this, the CEO budgeted for a 4% increase in fiscal year 2025. We are going to base the 4, the proposed 4% for fiscal year '26 off of that already budgeted and proposed fiscal year '25. That's what he's saying. We want the increase on what you originally proposed for.
So, just for, so I'm clear, are we, are we saying that we're looking at an 8% increase?
We're going, but you didn't expend the 4%, correct?
Right, so they didn't get no pay rates for '25.
Right, but you, you did budget and account for that, correct?
We, I budgeted 4% in '25.
You, and you got those rates? You said, "These are the expected rates of you to get that expected 4%," correct?
Right.
Okay.
But you didn't encumber the funds.
Wait, wait, please.
Correct.
Yeah, let's, let's...
And so, so, so my motion is exactly as stated with the friendly amendment, of basing the fiscal year '26 4% increase off of the assumed 4% 2025 pay increase that would have been there, that you had budgeted for previously. That's what Member Niebrich is saying.
So, let's go ahead and vote, let's have Board Member Myers voted first, if you can, if you'd like, because I know you want to vote on this, go ahead.
You can use the podium, ma'am.
You can, yeah, I want to be courteous to Board Member Myers, I know she wants to vote.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Chair Viera?
No.
Director Wosel?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
No.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Clendenon?
No.
Director Hartfield?
No.
Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Mackelpatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Hello?
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Niebrich?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes nine to five.
Thank you, Board. And again, I, I wanted to rush that, so to speak, to have added courtesy to Board Member Myers. Okay, so to our, so this concludes all business for today, please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. McLean.